Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 17th, and the time is 6:01, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing is our public forum for the fiscal year 25 budget. We are committed to bringing transparency and public participation to school committee meetings. Things may not always go smoothly, but we are working with our IT department and GCAM to ensure that we provide the best and clearest access we can during this time. You will be joined to the call in mute mode. Please remain on mute until you are recognized by the chair. The administrative assistant will unmute your microphone to enable you to be heard. The chair will recognize members of the public in the order of their use of the Google Meet raised hand feature. Remember, we will ask you to state your name and the street or address of your residence when you are speaking. As a reminder, the members of the school committee cannot respond to any comments made during a public speak. This is your time to speak on any topic. There will be a three-minute time limit for those who wish to speak. Thank you for your participation and your patience.
So we're doing our FY26 public forum. We've received first draft submissions from each of the principals and department heads. In this early phase, we have a few cost drivers for the FY26 budget. In our technology department, there's a significant need in infrastructure. We are exploring grant and other options to remove that from our operating budget for FY26. The Operational Service Division, or OSD, has increased out-of-district tuition by 3.67% this year, leading to an estimated 60,000 increase in our out-of-district tuition costs for FY26. And there's also a significant increase in special ed transportation that we're tracking for next year as well. There are also some new requests for FY26. The East Meadow principal is proposing new math materials to support illustrative math, as well as a new teaching position at East Meadow. And for the junior/senior high school, the principal is proposing two new teaching positions. For facilities, we have a couple of proposals as well. The HVAC system, the management system for it, needs to get an update for the system, as well as some monitoring, so we're proposing that. There's a five-year fire protection inspection, which is approximately $8,000, which the East Meadow system is doof. And both gyms have some recommended repairs that we're proposing for the two buildings. So those are some of our initial cost drivers.
Okay. So how are, um, do you have any slides that you want to put up to go over? Or are we just waiting for questions?
We're waiting for questions.
Okay. Um, I don't believe we have any visitors on Google Meet, at least not that I can tell. Any questions from the committee at first blush? This is really meant for people outside of, because we talk about it in our subcommittee and regularly, so, um, do you guys, do you all have any questions? So I say we give it a couple minutes. It's 6:05. We were supposed to start at 6:00, which we were pretty close to, and see if we can garner any interest. If not, I say we close the forum and move on with our meeting. Thoughts? I mean, I don't know.
I agree. I think we give a reasonable window for people to join, and then adjourn if we don't have any. No questions were submitted to me prior to the meeting as well. I made that available through the newsletters and our communications.
I didn't, usually I hear, I get one or two things from some, you know, somebody's like, hey, what about this or what, that? So I don't know. I don't know, because I didn't get anything this time, so I'm not really sure. Do you all have any ideas, different ideas, on how we can try to connect with people? So this is our first one. We usually try to have another one before we vote, right?
In March.
In March.
And in the March one, we'll have had the state chapter 70 numbers. We'll have a lot more concrete numbers to really put us into that final stretch of what the budget would look like.
Okay. So everyone put your thinking caps on on ways that we can try to generate some interest and participation, so that we can have some good discussions for these kinds of things, because I don't want to waste our time necessarily, but, you know, I want to be able to communicate with the masses, I guess. Except our masses are pretty small.
So when we actually put the budget out, will we get feedback then typically? Is that what we're hoping?
That's what we're hoping.
Okay. Because I didn't know if maybe we had some numbers.
A few people attended our March forum last year. Not very much in the way of public comment. A couple of years ago, we had it in the East Meadow cafeteria. There was more attendance. We did have some questions and some input from community members, but we haven't in the past couple of years. Thank you.
All right. So, um...
Just one quick question. We have a, we have a projection of the budget to do the septic pumping this year, right?
Correct.
Okay. That'd be a mess if we didn't.
Yes.
I was gonna say, yeah, I better not say what I was gonna say. Long day. Sorry.
No, we haven't, uh, we haven't trimmed that from the budget yet.
All right, great.
Some things just can't go, you know, I'm gonna have to...
Well, we had to do it last year. They pushed it off, so, um...
Okay.
It's not an annual requirement. We have to do it every two to three years.
Okay.
It's just the last longer you can do it.
Yeah.
All right. I, Ginny, is there anybody?
I got nobody, nobody in the chat. I got no questions, nothing.
It's 6:08. I say we wait until 6:10. That gives, uh, you know, full 10 minutes. Maybe my computer will restart, because I didn't heed David's advice and start it. So, let's try to do some updates. Um, all right. Well, that's exciting.
Mr. Drummond has been working really hard trying to really pull those identifiers out for us, so we met a little bit this morning, and, uh, and, uh, we really honed in on really where we definitely would see the vast majority of the changes, and he did a good job really identifying those.
Okay. Almost there.
Yep.
So 26% of the way there.
Well, just in time. Is that a business that you use?
No, it's, um, vinyl. I have a cricket.
Oh, okay.
So it's like iron on.
I like that.
But I can wear it to work and not be like screaming Brandy.
Super fan.
On Fridays, I will wear that shirt sometimes. Depends. So we'll see. Is, um, was Cole planning on coming?
Yes.
Because we, I think we'll be able to start for 6:30, so we'll just bounce back to him, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, it is now 6:10. We still have not gotten any, um, any participants in our forum, so I, um, I don't think we need to adjourn from the forum, but we can do it. We're gonna, we're gonna close the Google Meet or... Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't have anybody to participate, and we can't have a, um, we can't use Google Meet for the rest of our meeting, right?
So therefore, do we have to turn this one off?
Yep.
You can end the meeting.
Okay. So we'll end that meeting, and then we'll, um, just roll right into our, um, thing. First is our consent agenda. Minutes from December 3rd. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the December 3rd agenda.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Next is minutes 35 and 37, which have gone around for signature.
I'll make a motion to accept warrants number 35 and 37.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Next, visitors' permit. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address, so that this information can be included in the record of the meeting. Do we have any visitors? You guys are here just to listen and maybe a calendar, yeah? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. We just talked about Cole. If he shows up before we, um, we finish, we will circle back to him. Next is new business, school calendar.
Okay, I gave a proposal for two school calendars here that we're taking a look at. One is similar to last year. Great. Proposal two is similar to last year, and proposal one would be, um, the teachers come in on the last week of August, and the students start on the, the third week of, I mean, the 27th, the Wednesday. So there's two particular proposals there for the calendar. So it might be something you guys want to look at, and we can review it at the next meeting, ask some questions. We did move one of the PD days from November, because we do not have election next year, so we took the November 4th PD, because we're kind of heavy in the beginning of the year, so we took that, um, November meeting, moved it to March. So that, that is one change from last year, but everything else is, uh, you know, pretty much the same.
So which one do you all want to look at first? Let's talk about proposal one first, I guess.
As you can see, the new teachers come the 21st and 22nd, and the professional development for the rest of the staff is 25, 26, and the students start the 27th. Which leaves the last day of school to June 12th.
So I'm looking at this, and I see that we have a curriculum day on February 11th, which is approximately three days before school vacation. I would say I would rather have, I mean, I don't know if, if we end up using all five days coming back on the Monday. Is anyone going to be up for coming back on a Monday?
Let me take the PD day out, period? Or...
February is a half day?
It's February 11th.
Curriculum half day, February 11th, yeah. Curriculum half day.
Wouldn't it have to be moved to a subsequent month?
Yeah, we could definitely, we could move to January somewhere, or...
Or could we do it in, like, May, when there's no, when there aren't? There isn't, uh, any day off, except for, I don't know, it just feels silly to have it right before we...
One of the, one of the issues that may come up with May is some of the standardized testing. There's a lot of standardized testing, AP at the junior/senior high school, um, MCAS or, and things in May, so that might present a problem for a half day trying to fit it in.
Maybe we make December 23rd a half day? Have it, I don't know, that, because that's the curriculum, because then the teacher...
I don't, yeah, I don't think we're gonna get a lot of curriculum work that day.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like there might be some time in January if that would be...
We already have a bunch of days off in January.
Right.
Or could we move it up a week? It just seems weird to have it a half day right before we're getting ready to go out on vacation, and it's the same in both proposals.
Yeah, we could do it the 4th, the Wednesday before. That shouldn't be a problem, because that would just be...
Does someone want to come up here? Do you all want to have a seat?
We were just wondering if we could see it. We haven't seen it.
Oh, I thought you guys usually see it before.
Oh, I wasn't sure what the process was. Could we move that, making it with me?
Probably would look at it.
I hope they got it after we approved it.
Thank you. We, we've tried to be transparent, so...
Sorry, that was my fault, Jenny. I apologize.
So these are just your two proposals? Last year, we had a proposal that was, uh, Stephen had worked on, and then there was some with some dates that we had gotten from you guys, so I, my bad, I didn't, um, I didn't think to, uh, talk to you about it, Mary Jane, so...
That's okay.
I take some stuff for granted, I'm sorry about that.
Fine. We'll work it out. We'll get plenty of time. It's just the first, first run-through, so...
Well, so we're saying September 2nd, isn't it today?
It's yellow.
Oh, so that...
Yeah, just pre-K in kindergarten, that's our first day of school.
Okay, so yellow doesn't always mean off.
Correct.
Oh, I don't like that. We gotta figure out a better...
We can change the color.
Yeah, because it should be something that's like, so red is off, no school.
Disease, no, stays. Yeah, that probably should have been changed too, yeah. First day of school for pre-K and kindergarten, so it's not really an off day. Yeah, we'll change those to a different color, blue or something.
Or the half day would be a different color, because that's...
Every day, right?
It looks, to me, right, just, I mean, it's just a visual cue, but I want to make sure that people don't think that they are not starting...
This one, correct. So it's off on the 27th.
So the two start, the 27th and the 2nd, you could make a different color, and then, yeah, okay.
Oh, I see.
That makes sense.
Okay. So then the 18th and the 25th, so the yellow is really just informational, not an off day, except sometimes it's an off day.
That's the whole half day.
That's how we kind of organized it, is that the yellow was more of an informational day, like a look here type of a day.
Got it.
So, because if some J's, GJSHS, has half-days and, you know, EM, you know, he doesn't, so that's where it kind of was like, look at me.
Yeah, being a lookout for that day.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
We can still change the color. I think the half, the first days of schools, I think maybe should be different colors anyhow.
Um, any thoughts from anybody?
Nope, glad we have the teachers here this year.
Yeah. There's really not too much, um, difference, other than starting on a Wednesday as opposed to a Monday, and I know we went back and forth about that last year.
Right.
Although both of them are better in handling that than they were last year. Last year, we had, like, come in for one day, and then have Friday off, and then...
Yeah, because of the way Labor Day, um...
If you take a look at the second proposal, it does talk about that, giving the Friday off.
Well, yeah, because the second proposal, like, Juneteenth is what throws everything off. People would come back for the last day if we use all five snow days. That last day would be the Monday.
Why wouldn't they be back on the...
Well, if we use all five on...
If we use all five snow days.
See, I'm not seeing that in proposal two. I'm seeing only in proposal one.
Proposal one is if we use all five snow days.
Yeah, yes, that's what I was asking, yeah, okay. But it's like I want to take bits and pieces from both.
Right.
And we can do that.
We can do that.
So I know that attendance will be very low if we have to have, if we have snow days and people have to come back for that Monday.
Oh, absolutely.
You know?
The 23rd on both calendars is a full day of December. I apologize. Yep. Yes, okay, yep. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly.
Is the only way we can have a half-day for it to be a curriculum half-day? Or can we say...
No, you can say half-day.
Does it screw up our hours?
It affects our hours.
I can run the numbers on that, though, for you. That's not a problem. I think the high schools have plenty of hours. It would be the elementary we'd have to check on.
Because I would love, I think it would be a nice way for you guys to have a half-day, because it feels like it's more fun. That's the way I remember growing up, was always like a half-day.
Yeah, I can run, I'll run the numbers on that one. Like, if the high school shouldn't be a problem, it's just really the elementary we have to look at.
Would that be better?
I just, uh, you know, I, I don't know...
Just at first glance.
Yeah, just at first glance, I just...
Yeah, well, we're not voting on it today.
No, 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 I know that.
I like to have Daniel 20.
Is the, is the school committee amendable to asking, um, staff for feedback when you guys get your, um, calendars?
No, I just, I, I will say we're amenable to having feedback, but I don't want it to end up coming back. Feedback does not mean that that is the option that we will go with, and that was, that was some problem, a little bit of a scuttlebutt last year.
Correct.
So, I mean, I, I appreciate the input, but I want to make sure that just because we're getting input, doesn't mean that that's going to be the way that we go.
Correct. So that is just how it was translated to us when we had gotten it, so then that's where the confusion came in as well.
Certainly, I would appreciate input. Our next meeting's not until January.
Okay.
And so if you guys could get something back to us, um, before that meeting, um, that would be helpful, and then we can...
Absolutely.
We can look at it.
Okay, that's one.
Because this is our first, um, first look at it too, so...
Okay.
Any, um, any other thoughts or, um, proposed, proposed ideas at first blush?
Uh, no. Thrilled to have the input upfront this time, and I think that'll be way more beneficial.
Awesome. Thank you.
George, anything?
No, nothing, uh, to add, no.
If you'd like to mark them up, I'd say mark them up.
Okay.
Bring them back to me.
Perfect.
So do you want us to amend these, or do you want to do a third one? I guess that's what I'm thinking. Or just wait, just give me a list of what you're thinking?
Yeah, well, um, if anyone has any comments or whatever, send them to Ginny and Mary Jane, and I think you already noted a couple of ideas that I had. But if anyone has anyone else, you guys can collect some, um, input, and, um, and then we'll, we'll probably have a third go-around, a third option, and then we'll, we'll look.
Okay.
But mostly, I, from my perspective, what I would really appreciate is, like, for the beginning of school, um, like that, how you, because I feel like there were some strong opinions on how school started, um, whatever it was this year, or last year, or whatever, so I'd really like some feedback about, about that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right. Anything else on the calendar for now? All right, hearing nothing, we'll move on, so this will appear on the next agenda. Thanks for coming up, you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing business, school choice, the enrollment dashboard.
There's been no change on the, on the dashboard since November.
Okay.
So it's 678. We're holding steady. I believe we're gonna have a couple move-outs at the end of the month, so, but they're not moving to other schools. I believe they're just moving it out of bounds.
Okay. Next up is superintendent search. So we have the brochure. It looks like there's some highlighted areas that we need to discuss, or these were what was changed. Who is Glenn Kuchar?
He is the head of MASC. But you could probably change that to whoever we're using.
Yeah, so, um, we usually, it's usually Tracy Novick, but we have to, um, we have to talk to her. Liz was asking about that, too. Hi, Cole.
All right.
Good. We started early because of our, um, no, no, it's, you had, you had no way of knowing. So we're gonna finish this topic, and then we'll circle back to you, if that's okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, you did nothing wrong.
What are you apologizing for? Coming on time?
You're early, we're just super early. Um, so also Liz was saying, um, Liz LaFond was saying that she, um, was talking about using mask and how we can do that. I'm trying to find the text that she sent me. Um, if we, if we want to use, um, technical assistance from mask, and there's no cost, and we can do, they can help with posting, and, um, staff member that can receive all the applications and make sure they're complete and everything, so that's something I would like to consider, um, do, but I was hoping to have her input when she's here. So we had talked about posting not until January 18th or 28th or something? Is that right? Where, where are...
The dates on there, what I have adjusted, based on the day that it fell on last year, or...
Okay.
For the year 2021. It would just be adjusted for this year.
Yes. Any changes or anything that you all don't like? Now, last time, we had a salary scale on there, right? Was, wasn't it like 125 to 135 or something? Do we want to put that back on there? Do we need to talk about where, what the numbers do, so we can have the appropriate range? Or do we want to leave it blank and salary commensurate with experience and leave it be at that?
I think we start there. We can verify this, there was some, like, there was legislation or ruling about salary ranges on...
I think it starts to...
Posting. Okay, so we might, okay, so this might come in.
We might be okay or not?
I think it starts July 1st.
Oh, 2025?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then we could do, commensurate with experience and qualifications.
Okay. Um, I think our brochure is pretty good. Do we have any pictures from the high school we could use?
The one in the middle is from the high school.
Oh, okay.
It's the only one I got from the high school.
All right.
Howie really takes over that, so if I can, I can put in a picture, she just has to get me one that everybody's okay as far as media was.
Okay.
Shout a little louder?
Yeah.
Because I can't hear.
That'd be great. I mean, there's a, yeah, okay. Any other, um, notes, comments, questions? No?
No.
All right. Cole?
Thank you. At the high school, for academics, the progress reports were just sent out last week, quarter two. The program of studies is currently being revised. These revisions will take place annually. Team leaders are working within their departments to finalize course descriptions for the classes being offered next year. Faith Ramos just completed the toy drive. All toys were donated this past Saturday. Additionally, the food drive was also wrapped up last Friday, and teachers that participated have offered their scale of bonus points to the students who took time to donate that food. As for school culture and the environment, December excravaganza. The door decorating finished last week, a lot of stuff finished last week, because we're coming to break, obviously. The winning classroom will be announced this week. Hopefully, it's not the art room, like every other year.
I think mine looks good.
Ms. Pickney did a really good job. She teamed up with Mrs. Blackburn, so they put one in between their two doors, and they made a really good one.
I kind of have to vote for the art room, because that's Mayor's door.
Um, the, of course, there's a spirit week going on this week as well. Every day is something different. Today was winter sports representation, so everybody wear their winter sports jerseys. We did karaoke during lunch last week, and we are also hoping to offer it again this week, and there will be a pep rally on Friday. I know there was some back and forth about that, but we are ending up doing that this Friday. Something very important to me, a FAFSA night meeting will be held on January 30th at 6:00 PM in the high school cafe. Definitely useful to, especially senior parents, but I suppose useful to everybody else, as though all have to go through that at some point. As for future plans and goals, advisory is slated to begin tomorrow. Our first lesson will ask students to design the letter G that best represents them. And I was told to put out a special thanks to the PTO for coordinating the staff cocoa bar at the high school today. As for East Meadow, last Thursday, the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, or MARK for short, came to East Meadow to meet with students in grade K through 6 on three separate assemblies to be developmentally appropriate. The focus is on bullying prevention, cyberbullying issues, and empowering students to advocate for themselves and others. This week, we have the Little Shoppers, a program in which students can shop for their families for inexpensive gifts for Christmas. It is also Spirit Week here at, uh, East Meadow, and there is, like, at the high school, different days each week. Ugly Sweater Day kicked off the week on Monday, and we will end the week with 'twas the day before holiday break, a pajama day. Candy grams are going out to staff and students, and this Friday, East Meadow is having a PBIS pizza lunch and a holiday craft activity for all students. Uh, something very important to me, a fast fun night meeting will be held on January thirtieth at six P M. in the high school cafe. Um, definitely useful to especially senior parents, but I suppose useful to everybody else as though I'll have to go through that at some point. As for future plans and goals, advisory is slated to begin tomorrow. Our first lesson will ask students to design the letter G that best represents them. And I was told to put out a special thanks to the PTO for coordinating the staff cocoa bar at the high school today. As for East Meadow, last Thursday, the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, or MARK for short, came to East Meadow to meet with students in grade K through six on three separate assemblies to be developmentally appropriate. The focus is on bullying prevention, cyberbullying issues, and empowering students to advocate for themselves and others. This week we have the Little Shoppers, a program in which students can shop for their families for inexpensive gifts for Christmas. It is also Spirit Week here at, uh, East Meadow and there is like at the high school, different days each week. Ugly Sweater Day kicked off the week on Monday and we will end the week with 'twas the day before holiday break, a pajama day. Candy grams are going out to staff and students and this Friday, East Meadow is having a PBIS pizza lunch and a holiday craft activity for all students. That's all I have. Any questions?
I don't have any.
Perfect.
Thanks, Cole.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry, I'm.
No, you were, you're totally, we're just like sailing through this today, so you're perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so next we have subcommittees. Um, Jill and Liz aren't here. Um, do we have much for budget and finance or is what we talked about initially with your little blurb, or do you want to meet for a few minutes on that?
Um, I think we're good with that initial. And I shared, um, an email with a summary with you and Mike. Uh, so if you want to take a look at that, we can talk about it at our next subcommittee meeting.
Excellent.
And I'll have more information when we do that.
So I think what we'll do is for our, it's ne- typically the second meeting, but we'll, we'll do it for the first. Because we're going to have to, um, reorganize because Jill won't, um, be here, so we'll just need to make sure that we, all the holes are filled. Um, okay, superintendent's report.
I did want to, or Cole left, I did want to say that, um, I also met with, uh, Mrs. Dejolay and she gave me the same information, so I decided to keep some of that out of my, out of my report, so, um, I just want to talk about a little bit about the new law on the ballot initiative of the MCAS. So we received a, um, a bunch of FAQs about what's happening there, but I just wanted to let everybody know. I gave you kind of a blurb in there, but basically it's saying that for students who did not, um, pass the MCAS this year, districts have to create a plan for the students that did not pass. Um, that is not, um, in our, we don't have to do that this year. All of our seniors have passed, so we're good this year. So, um, even next year, I talked to, um, Sarah. There's a two, two students who took a makeup earlier this year and she's confident that they passed. We may not even have to put a policy in place for next year, but we certainly have to come up with a place, a, a, uh, new procedure of graduation requirements for our students. And the state is having a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock. It'll be part of that. They're going to really leave it up to the districts to what that looks like, but they're really looking at mass core. You know, for, to make sure that people are following that for the most part. Um, we also were given the directive, if we choose to, we can continue to use the MCAS as a graduation requirement. That's totally up to the school committees. So that's just kind of what, what that is saying. But as of this year, we're good this year and perhaps next year, but at least we'll start taking a look at it, um, towards the end of this year to see how those students fared. And, uh, then we can take a look at it and how we want to move forward. So that's what we have to, to take a look at. Um, Boomer, the Thunderbird mascot, was unable to visit East Meadow last Friday, so he has, um, rescheduled his visit to this Friday, December twentieth. Hopefully he'll be here. And then I just wanted to, um, probably on behalf of the whole school committee, I don't know if Jen wants to say something, but I want to thank Jill Pelletier for her service on the school committee. This was her last meeting. She couldn't make it today. So we just want to let you know that, you know, we've been honored by your commitment and dedication and, uh, and, uh, that's really all that I have right now.
Yes, we will miss Jill tremendously, um, so. So I have to say about that. Um, Pat?
All right, um, couple of things. So some notifications went out around, um, AHR, which is our asbestos management program that went out to the district. Um, we are working with a company, we are, it is time for our three-year, uh, review of that program, uh, reinspection next door. Um, they'll make recommendations of around our procedures that we do. Um, East Meadow isn't impacted, so when the renovation, the building was abated and, uh, nothing was specified or utilized containing asbestos. Um, but some of the building materials next door, um, they are, for example, floor tiles. It's embedded in the floor tile. It's not something that is airborne. It is not something that we have under any normal use is, poses a threat. I, I understand that it is one of those terms or words that people hear and often they immediately go to worst case scenario. Um, so we are following procedures. We're doing the things that we need to do. We're training our staff. Um, but it is just time for that reevaluation and so we'll be doing that. Uh, hopefully we'll, they'll be coming in over the break.
So if they have any, do they have findings from the evaluation? Like if they go through and there's something, are we then?
So they rate things that may need more atten- uh, attention sooner than later. Um, anything that is going to need immediate attention or more timely attention is likely going to be in the boiler room, in the mechanic spaces. Um, in the classroom spaces, it's the floor tiles and the glue that holds on the bulletin boards and blackboards. So as long as we leave those in place, we're in good shape.
I mean, no one starts chewing the floor or something.
Um, yeah, and the way that, um, our crew waxes and maintains the floor meets all the requirements for keeping everything encapsulated. That's the key thing is the encapsulation. Um, and we're meeting all of those requirements.
Excellent.
Um, next facility item, um, I met with the, uh, mechanical engineers and the architect yesterday um, to lay out the timeline for our bid for the kitchen. Um, so our plan is for around January twentieth is to have our materials posted, uh, to the central register. They'll go onto comp buys as well. Um, doing our public advertising in January. Um, having our site walkthroughs at the beginning of February and having bid documents due, uh, at the end of February. Um, and then it will take a couple of weeks once a, once the bids come in to do contracts. Um, our anticipated, um, start date will be June twenty-third, which is, you know, we save our five days in case we use all our snow days. That is the Monday that follows that because the first step will be abatement in the kitchen. And so we want to make sure the building is clear of students. Um, we will, any summer programming, um, extended year programming, we'll hold it at East Meadow, uh, while, because of the construction that's going on.
And central office will, will find space over here?
It won't. It will be isolated to, um, just that area and when abatement crews come in, they cordon, cordon off the areas. It's all sealed, um, and the air, the exchanges, the testing is all done before the space is open to construction. Uh, the initial estimate is that the abatement should only take a couple of days.
Excellent.
And then by the time the testing is all done, we're probably a, a week to just over a week on that phase and then we can move right into demo construction. Cool, so. Um, the last thing that I have, um, I reached out to several, uh, area districts. So there, our rural school aide came in, uh, la- they're doing two payments or, uh, two dispersments. Um, it came in at last year's level, which is, um, overall for the year is about thirty thousand less than what is, um, in the budget from the state. Uh, I reached out to Desi, uh, when that, I was first made aware of that at the end of last week, when the deposit was made. Um, I don't know if I'm the first one to bring it to their attention, but I certainly brought it to their attention. I'm waiting to hear how they're going to resolve that, whether that is a supplemental payment now or in the second payment to make up the difference so that we receive our full allocation. Um, but that's something that I'm going to be watching. And as I said, other districts that I reached out to, they noticed the same thing, that it was coming at last year's level instead of the current fiscal year.
Excellent.
So that's all that I have.
Perfect. Um, Jill's not here for CES. Um, so we'll have to, I'll, we'll have to send her a note just to see if there's anything from that last meeting and we'll, um, talk at our next meeting to see who might be interested in taking over, um, for CES. Anything, um, that we want to make sure we have on the agenda for next time besides subcommittees? And we'll still be talking about, uh, superintendent and school calendar? Um, anything else that you all can think of? All right. Well, with that, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
We'll have executive session.
Oh, I apologize. So we will be going into executive session. So could you do a roll call vote? I didn't read the whole agenda. Apparently I missed it.
That's no problem.
Jen? Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Oh, so we'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Act, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. We already did a roll call vote. With that, I will say good night. Thanks, everybody.